For 20th, 2023, Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners meeting. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Welcome, everybody. Just to go through the normal setup introductory comments. We are being recorded. This is a public meeting. There is a virtual option to participate in the meeting. I'll watch the screen here for participants online assisted by Riley and Doug to make sure I don't miss any. And John, he does a pretty good job, too. If there is any public comment today on any item that isn't on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and your address, and then each person that has public comment will be allowed three minutes for comment, and we will move from there. So at this time, any awards, recognitions, or correspondence? I do have a... Jim, did you bring your letter of recommendation? Do you want to read it?
I have it on email.
Do you want to read it? You're here. Normally, I would read it, but I thought that it'd be a good one that... for you to read.
Surprise.
Yeah, careful of those free things.
I have an attachment. And I can paraphrase.
Or I can read it if you want me to, Jim.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
We received a letter from Jim Littlefield, Under Sheriff Yumitilla County. Do you want me to turn it that way or this way?
Split the difference.
Our office received a letter of appreciation from the Walla Walla County Sheriff, Mark Kreider, regarding Deputy Hayes' participation in an event that Walla Walla had. It was a large group of motorcycle riders. They call them outlaw motorcycle gangs. They were having a big event up in North County into Walla Walla County, and they had a big law enforcement present in the area just to make sure that they weren't going to get out of hand. Sometimes those kind of parties get out of hand, and we did receive some complaints of noise from neighbors and things like that, but overall, it was a pretty okay event. It wasn't any major event. So Sheriff Kreider sent a letter to our office explaining the event. I'm trying to see how many attendees they had. A couple hundred attendees there, and they had a big law enforcement present. I mean, I've got to make it bigger because my eyes aren't what they used to be.
No judging here.
Sheriff Kreider writes, although it is not possible to say with any certainty, it is likely that the overt law enforcement presence and monitoring dissuaded additional criminal activity throughout the event. Yumitilla County Senior Deputy Hayes, it says Rowan Hayes, operated an ATV patrol in the camp area throughout the weekend and maintained availability for emergency responses. He demonstrated excellent flexibility with the evolving operational plan and stayed in communication with operational command. In rural regions such as ours, with limited resources, we must often lean on one another to... in order to accomplish our mission of public safety. Senior Marine Deputy Hayes' assistance, teamwork, and flexibility were invaluable throughout this operation, and he should be commended. And so we would just like to recognize Senior Deputy Rowan Hayes for assisting our partners in Walla Walla County and making this event relatively safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney General Littlefield. I do want to read the last sentence from Sheriff Kreider was, "On behalf of all of the men and women of the Walla Walla County Sheriff's Office, please accept our sincere thanks, and please never hesitate to reach out to our office for any assistance." It's amazing how well the different sheriff departments in this region participate in events. All you have to do is look at the Yumitilla County Fairform City Pro Rodeo, the Pendleton Roundup, and other large events where the cooperation is incredible. So please take our thanks from the commission back to Deputy Hayes, and we can't say thanks enough. So thank you.
I think it would have been really cool if you'd have been on the Hodaka, just saying.
I think we're leaning that for Deputy Allee Street.
Any additional awards, recognitions, or correspondence? All right. Approval of minutes of the previous meetings. I have the August 2nd and the August 16th minutes here.
I move approval of previous minutes from August 2nd, August 16th of this year.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Any additions or changes to the agenda? So at this time, I do want to ask if there's any public input that is not on the agenda today. Sure, come on up.
Good morning, commissioners. Sunny Danforth, 225 Banville Avenue, Mountain Free Water. I'm coming before you this morning as a member of Blue Mountain Alliance, and I wanted to find out, get an update as to the... if it has been filed with the Supreme Court, the taking for Nolan Hills going to the Supreme Court.
I'll let Doug answer.
It has been authorized. I believe the attorney is trying to get the brief in final form before she files the appeal.
Okay. Okay, because Blue Mountain Alliance will... would like to file as a friend of the court, and so we're wanting to get an update. Can we be notified when the attorney?
Yes, I can notify you.
Okay, thank you. Dave Price, if you could notify Dave Price. Then I also would like to find out, I understand there was a meeting recently regarding Nolan Hills and a SIP agreement, so I would like to get a copy of that SIP agreement? And I'm sorry that none of us was notified about getting... that we could even have come to the hearing, that that was on an agenda item since we have been quite interested in that project.
I think the SIP's posted, if I believe...
Yeah, it's on our website.
Is it? Okay, where do I find that? I mean, I know the website, but where do I?
Under the Board of Commissioners' agendas.
Okay, okay.
Can they just click on it?
Okay, in that.
Yeah.
All righty. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, come forward.
I'm Terri Johnson, and I come to you today with this resolution because you know that COVID is on the rise again, and...
Val, make sure you state your name.
My name's Valerie Badley.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So would you like me to read it to you? I've got copies for you also.
First of all, let us know what it is.
It's a resolution in the matter of proclaiming that Yumitilla County's rejection of scientific mask mandates, closures, or restrictions related to respiratory or other diseases, and reconfirming personal freedoms.
Yeah, give us each a copy of that.
Could I come up or?
Yeah, come on up.
Thank you.
I have these copies of those. These are probably these.
Thank you.
I have some. I have a copy for you.
Can you read it, or do you want us to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Whereas Yumitilla County, the state of Oregon, and other states suffered immeasurable economic and societal harms as a result of unconstitutional mandates, restrictions, and forced closures related to the impacts of engineered viruses in 2020, 2021, and 2022. And whereas the morbidity rate of COVID... for COVID-19 was and is less than 1% in adults and a fraction of that in children, and total death counts in the U.S. remain steady before, during, and after the phases of the so-called pandemic and with COVID deaths. Skyrocketing even influenza deaths completely disappeared from statistical data, and whereas scientific evidence and peer-reviewed studies show that masks are not effective against respiratory viruses, that they impede social and speech development, critical to the life success of children, and that they increase CO2 intake to dangerous levels. And whereas so-called COVID-19 vaccines lack any peer-reviewed analysis of their objective safety, their manufacturers are exempt from any litigation resulting from harm caused by these untested and unproven products. Yet, due to governmental outreach, many Americans were forced to choose between... between the livelihood or being injected with a risky mRNA that changes the function of their immune systems, narrowing the focus of antibodies to extract strains rather than broader and adaptive efficiency. And whereas widespread occurrence of mitocardias... mito... I don't know how to say that.
Mitocardias.
Immunological deficiency, neurological symptoms like bells, palsy, tremors, partial paralysis, along with many other effects, have followed the high-pressure rollout of these vaccines. And yet, COVID infections in vaccine recipients have for... outpaced those among those choosing natural immunity or treatment. Castigated by the mainstream, and whereas unconstitutional lockdowns, which forbade the free exercise of commerce, were extremely damaging to smaller and locally owned businesses while advancing opportunities for mega corporations. And whereas the state and federal governments illegally quenched the right... quesh... squish the right of people to attend faith-based gatherings, these breaking down societal fabric, and whereas state and federal agencies destroyed their own credibility by using unconstitutional means to suppress accurate information about the efficiency of COVID treatments, such as ivermectin, hyd...
Hydroxychloroquine.
Hydroxychloroquine, vitamin D, and... what's that one?
Corsetin.
Calling them their promotion disinformation while simultaneously promoting infective and dangerous or even deadly treatments, regimens, such as...
Tramvezavir.
...and mechanical ventilators, which caused the deaths of many thousands of people. And whereas state and federal mandates...
Imperably.
...imperably harmed millions of our precious senior citizens by unnecessarily use of lockdowns, restrictions, and mask rules that isolated them from normal societal interactions, basic caregiver access and form from their loved ones, causing a dramatic worsening of loneliness, stress, anxiety, depression, increasing the risk of dementia and of death from all causes. Now therefore be it resolute... resolved by the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners that people are free to take steps to deem appropriate... appropriate to protect their health, safety, and welfare, and no government has the constitutional authority to deprive them of those freedoms. Yumitilla County assets will be used for... no Yumitilla County assets will be used for... to enforce future unconstitutional mandates from state or federal governments that are related to lockdowns, closures, or vaccinations having to do with any COVID or other disease. No government has the authority to restrict free speech or the right of assembly or the right to redress the government for grievances, or the right to commerce, or the right to travel, except for those that... those care rare and localized instances of public emergency as allowed for in the U.S. and Oregon constitutions.
Thank you. You actually have two resolutions here, so then, Val, do you want to make any comments, too?
Well, we're presenting this to you to get ahead of it.
Okay.
Because we know there's something coming. We do, and we just want to be prepared.
Okay, so the process is that we will take this back. You've given us two resolutions, and I'm guessing that the most important part here is the shall be resolved portion, not the whereas, because those don't hold anything.
Okay.
But we will take it back, review it, and then bring it up at a staff meeting, and then at that point, there'll kind of be a discussion on bringing it back and putting on the agenda here in the near future or in the future.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Any other public comments today?
I would like to, Sunny Danforth, again, in total support of that, because I think we need to... I understand from reading that out in the hallway that Coos County has adopted this, and I think it would behoove Yumitilla County to also adopt this resolution, and of course, county council needs to take a look at it. And I understand it's just two pages there. I didn't realize it's two separate resolutions, but two pages.
True.
And...
Two different ones.
Oh, I only read one that was two pages.
One's two pages, the one's a single page.
I don't know about the other one. And I read the two-page one, and I would encourage Yumitilla County to get ahead of this and adopt it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you, everyone, and thank you for coming to the meetings. It's always enjoyable to have people here during the meetings. Next item on the agenda is the business items. The first item on the agenda is the sheriff's office purchase, and this is a discussion on the existing carpet.
That's my cue.
All Captain Primmer.
Captain Karen Primmer with the Yumitilla County Sheriff's Office. I'm before you requesting approval for a new flooring for the dispatch center, which is the 365 24/7 Operations Center. The carpet has not been replaced since the building was built in 1999. I think I mentioned in the budget process that I'd be coming to you and basically asking to see if we could get it fixed. You have a couple of color pictures in front of you of what the existing looks like right now. There's also tripping hazards. We've had some other issues with it. The carpet is over the top of our underlying floor, so it's like a reset... like a reciled ceiling, except it's in the floor, so all the... they're...
Javelin?
Yeah, but the pieces that the carpet sits on are very large pieces of metal, and so they have to go in, and it's pieces of carpet that they're going to be laying on that. And then at the very end, you'll see where the proposed new will also have laminate flooring, right, where the dispatchers sit, and it'll kind of float in the carpet. We had to explore the idea of having all laminate in there, but it's too noisy, and so we will be putting, hopefully with your approval, laminate in that specific spot, but also in the entryway over on the side where the main conference room is at and where we have... when we have EOC matters and stuff, and public information officers come through there, that's where we put them at, so it'll be a lot cleaner, easier to take care of. And as I said, we have two quotes. The other one was slightly higher. I think it was just under 13,000. They also were not real keen on coming in at 10:00 or 11:00 at night when we needed them, when it was less busy for us to do that. And they're also willing to work, the new company, which is going to be Costless Carpet, they will work with us because our desks are specific and unique, and they have to have these handled and brought up off of those floors using special equipment by a company that will have come in who does our yearly cleaning, and they are willing to work around that as well, so. So I'm asking for approval of the new laminate and carpet for $10,766.84.
My first question is, if I remember right, that was included in the budget when you guys submitted your budget. Is that...
It was in the budget item. Yep.
You remember, Robert, how much they had?
I don't.
You?
I like the fact that it's a local company doing...
Mm-hmm.
Done the bid work.
I have a question on where you're putting the... are you putting the laminate in some bigger areas?
So the only other spot beside the area where the dispatcher sit and the chairs is over where we used to have a set of double doors that's next to us and the EOC, and now it's a single door. And it's also where the maintenance piece is, where all of our UPS and the electrical work is. So a lot of times when those people come in to check stuff, they drag in dirt and everything, and the carpet on that side honestly is better, but it's not perfect. But we're thinking with placing the laminate there, it's a lot easier, it's a lot sturdier, it's going to be easier to take care of, especially with those people coming and going.
Is it? Is it quite a big area?
Um, no, not really. Probably from here to here in a square, probably from that. It's not very much.
The only reason I ask is because I had someone propose to me the other day something about maybe, like they did here in the courthouse, where they took the concrete and shined it or I don't know what the term.
Polish it, probably?
Polish it up, and you know, Mark, is that ever an idea?
They don't have concrete.
There's no concrete out there?
Yeah, it's a metal floor system, and all the cabling and wiring is underneath that. It's like maybe this view.
So that's not an option.
So that's not.
It's concrete on the bottom, underneath.
Don't they have to like pull the tiles up, remove the carpet, and put a new carpet score on it?
That is correct, yes, yes.
Move it on the old dispatch center.
Yes, and that's what we've done in the newer part where the new lockers are, and then also we put laminate in the kitchen part. Huge amazing difference about the necessary and how cleaner it is for us, so.
Any other questions? Wishes of the commission?
I move to approve replacement of the old carpet with new carpet and laminate flooring in the dispatch center area for $10,766.84.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. Thanks.
You made my dispatchers very happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, none of those spills are from me.
Yeah.
Whatever.
The next item on the agenda today is the request for a proposal for an OHV trailer. We will do this in two parts. The first is to cancel the request for an existing RFP that we got results on.
Correct. We went out for a bid, it's been a couple weeks ago, got a couple bids, and they're more than we want to spend, so we're going to propose to reject those bids and then open up a new bid process for the next few weeks and see what comes of that.
Questions, comments?
Well, for the first piece, I would move that we cancel the request for proposal for the trailer and reject all proposals.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you. So the next one is to authorize the reissuance of a request for proposals for purchase of new ATV.
So this is a request to issue a new bid for the same item, again, based on our last request, the current trailers that we have are old and rethink are at end of life. There's still maybe some value in selling them, but we need a new snowmobile ATV, UTV trailer, carries all those items. We have programs with the Oregon State Parks. We have a robust snowmobile program that works up in the mountains every year, and so those items need replaced every now and then. So this is just a bid to seek... bid for a new trailer.
Questions, comments?
I move to authorize reissuance of request for proposals for purchase of new ATV, snowmobile trailer.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a approval to Murphy's Heating. So we'll begin the...
Good morning, commissioners. Mark Tanner, Facility Managers, Yumitilla County. So first one you have before you is for the final payment for the heating for the new Community Corrections Office in Hermiston for $6,450, and this will be reimbursed by Community Corrections.
Chairman, approval?
I second with questions.
Sure. There's been a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I do have questions. Mark, you have a couple of these on the agenda, and I just have this question. Has this whole project... did it come in around the budget or under?
Yeah, we're still below budget right now, so yeah.
Okay, excellent. Second.
Got it. Any other questions? There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Thanks, Mark. Next item is fire sprinklers.
Fire sprinklers. So this is at the courthouse. The requirements for the fire sprinkler system is that the action heads have to be replaced every 20 years, and it was determined at the last inspection that we were actually at 25 years, so we had to have those replaced at the expense of the county because of the fire marshal, so. So that is $6,195.
Questions, comments?
I have a question on that, too. So you can buy these sprinklers, and they put off a dry... some type of a dry product?
If you installed a dry system, yes.
Okay, and that is all the stuff?
No. This is a... well, we have two systems. We have... we have a dry system that is filled with air, and when the sprinkler head is tripped, the air obviously escapes, and then the water comes. And then we have a wet system that is always wet. So the wet system, those sprinklers are only have to be replaced every 50 years, so we have time on those yet.
Is this a new company?
It's a new company to... we used them last year and then this year. Originally, we were using Western Automatic Sprinkler, and then they closed, and we were using Cascade Fire Sprinkler, which is out of Tri-Cities, and they're super hard to get down and super hard to get scheduled, and so this is a local company, and so we went to try them.
Perfect. Wishes?
Sure. I approve payable to American Sprinklers, Inc., and you have $6,195.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you, and next is paving.
Yeah, this was also at Community Corrections Facility where we removed the old semi-trailer. There was no asphalt below, and so this was to repair that, and then also a couple of spots out in the front for $9,960, and this will also be reimbursed by Community Corrections.
Chairman, approval?
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you, and that brings up security.
Yeah, this is for the security system and fire alarm for Community Corrections Building. This was $8,090, also to be reimbursed by Community Corrections.
I have a question. Somewhere... is there security fencing around the back of that now? Or how is that?
This is a security system, not fencing.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, there is... yeah. The fencing is up, but the gates are not on yet.
Okay, and is this part of that, is the gates?
No, this is the building's security, burglar alarm and fire alarm, basically.
Okay, then at one point I thought you said that you were going to have some way that when people pulled up, that the fence would open up automatically?
Yeah.
People would go through, and that was a security feature?
That's just part of the fence stuff.
Okay.
So it ties into our existing FOB system that's in the building, yeah.
So this is for cameras and...
No, this is just... No, this is just the alarms. Yeah.
Are there cameras?
Yeah, there are cameras, yes. Yeah.
I approve payable to Smith Security LLC in the amount of $8,090.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and last is cabling.
Yeah, so here's your security, your cameras and stuff, so. This is also Community Corrections for the cabling and the door controls, camera install, all that from unit tech. In total, is $21,029.14.
Mr. Chairman, total thing, unit tech communications, $21,029.14.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
When's the grand opening?
Anytime.
There it is.
Yeah, there.
Okay, just curious.
I'll schedule something if you want.
Assuming that's the last payment there.
Uh, no, the fence. Once the gates and the gate controls are in, those would be the last.
Now we're back to that thing about assuming. Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Next item is public health payment. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Morris, Environment Health Supervisor, representing UcoHealth today.
Thanks, Mark.
Can you do the short straw?
Yeah. Joe is unfortunately at a conference right now. He should be coming back today, but I'm just here to stand in his place, and if there's any questions, I can try to help answer. If not, I will refer to Joe.
Okay, the first one is to, we're being asked to approve payment to the coalition of local health officials. Can you tell us what that is? It's a coalition of local health officials.
This one, I am not able to elaborate on, on this question here, but I will defer to Joe, or at least I have him follow up with you on this one.
Can I chime in for what little I know? Is that Joe, he's extremely act, he calls it CLO, and he's extremely active. Sits on the board, and from what he has told me, he thinks it's very important to be involved in this.
And they send out agendas and everything?
Huh?
They send out agendas?
So I approve payment to the coalition of local health officials in the amount of $7,715.1.
You said you moved to pay, approve.
I, I only have, okay, you're right, okay.
Then I will second that motion.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next one is still your spot, and it is approved. It's an agreement, Environmental Health, what Yumitilla County had more of.
This is more your wheelhouse, isn't it?
More of my wheelhouse, now, since I don't sit on the CLO. I'm very unfamiliar with what kind of goes on in that, in that environment.
So this is an IGA in the amount of $28,840 to keep you busy in Morro County also.
Increase the payment to us from Morro County to that level, is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Does that cover all the cost?
It covers a large portion of the costs. I'm not sure on how much it covers, but I can have Joe, you know, give you a percentage.
Also fee-based?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Perfect.
This is the supplement that these they receive.
Thanks, Mark.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to make that motion to the chair?
I, I move to approve and sign the updated agreement for Environmental Health Services on behalf of Morro County.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Well, come back soon.
I'll try to.
The next is insurance contract.
I was unsure if Dan wanted to do that.
Oh, Dan, you want to handle this?
Excuse me, I wasn't quite ready to speak. Dan and I with Director of Ministry of Services. Before you, we, is the recommendation of the insurance board, or our group, review board, I guess we could call it, and what our recommendation is, we had three agents participate, provide bids, Wheatland Insurance, Swanson Insurance, and Graybell Insurance. And then we went through a grading and checked references on the agents' insurance agents, and Wheatland ended up scoring the highest, and then Swanson closely followed that, and then Graybell Insurance. So the recommendation of the group is to go with Wheatland Insurance.
And Doug, you and I had a conversation today. I want to just clarify for the record that Wheatland did say that they would go for three years on this pricing?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, because that was going to be my question.
Yeah, that was, and I, Doug, I took a good job to do.
Too late now. Okay. Wishes?
I move to award the contract for insurance agent of record for county insurance policies for property liability and workers' compensation to Wheatland Insurance Center.
Second. Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Dan. This is a board payment. East Nori County's Association, $10,000 for the basic membership, and then the $5,000 for the Blue Mountain Intergovernmental Commission Committee, commonly known as the BIC.
Do we need to recap it with two payments or just one?
One.
And with that, I would move to approve payments to Union County for the dues for East Nori County Association in the amount of $15,000.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this point, all, meeting adjourned. Thanks, Riley.